Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Township Board of Commissioners. It's June twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two. We'll begin with the pledge of allegiance to the flag. The pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, endless. Okay, what do you call this mean? The order and roll call?
Mr. Cyrusine. Mrs. Farset.
Here.
Mrs. Cummins.
Here.
Mr. McMenamin.
Here.
Mr. Saunders.
Here.
Mr. Craig.
Here.
Mr. Worler.
Here.
Mr. Malasaika. Mr. Dolan.
Here.
All calls done.
Thank you. Okay, public forum, we have Beverly Meloagney. No, I'm sorry. I butchered that name. You think I should have, you think I should have did that right, right? I can't see. To my defense, we play on that board.
It's Beverly Meloagney, and I live at eleven forty-four Golden Lane. I live right up against Sabrina Field. That's why I'm here tonight. They built pitching mounds up against my house, which I don't understand why they would build it up against my house, because I've already had problems with bowls breaking my windows. And that's what I was told was not going to happen, that it was going to be trees and shrubs so that it would deter the kids from practicing pitching there. And there's plenty, it's a pretty large field, and I don't understand why they built this right up against my house. And then another one on the side of the parking lot facing my house. So I have up against my house, and another one here facing my house. And honestly, it looks like a dog one, but a camel one. I don't understand. It's very frustrating, because I was told, like I said, one of my main concerns, it started on March the eighth, when I was told that they were going to replace the fence and back and forth. And I was told that they were going to put trees and shrubs on the other side to deter them from happening. But on June the twentieth, they started building this pitching mound thing right up against my house, and then the other one facing my house. So now, it's like I can't even worry about my windows. I worry about having company if we're out in my yard or my deck, which I use a lot, dodging bowls coming out. So I, like I said, it's a pretty large field, so I don't know why they had to go up against my house. And I don't think any of you would like it against your houses, so I don't know why I have to deal with this.
Okay. I, we talked on the phone, I'd like you to come over and take a look at it, just so I know exactly what you're saying, and then I can check with the engineer and council for what's going on. But we definitely have some kind of screening, if that remains there or something, and we know what the complaints would be. I know what the complaints would be, because people have been there forever against that field.
But I also.
Before it was nothing there, it was always just.
Right, right. And they just practiced there, and it was, you know, one side. So my whole thing is, why did they have to go up against my house then?
But I know the kids, I, we're going to look at that. I don't even know.
I mean, it's a pretty large field, so, and there's other houses too, but it went up against my house. But there's other spots along the field where it could have went, where, isn't there any kind of zoning that, a distance from our house that they'd have to, you know, worry about it hitting houses or people?
Yeah, if there is, we make sure there's proper screening so that doesn't happen, which I think a lot of times before, and I haven't seen it yet, so I'm going to go over, and that's why I told you I want to look at it, and see what we can come up with. But we know your concerns, and we'll just make sure we, you know, that where the balls aren't going to come and hit your house, whatever we got to do. We'll take a look at it, but I know the home plate, way it was before, just knowing that the foul balls used to go over towards your house.
But a lot of it was the kids practicing on the side of my house, and now it's like it's built in that they practice on the side of my house. So I'm thinking it's going to be ten times worse. It's right there.
Yeah, I hear you. So let me, we're going to take a look at it, let me just, let me see what we.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you. I will take a look at it. Pitching machine? I'm sorry, I can't even, it's going to look small, Bob.
Good evening. About two-three-four Crump Creek Drive. Just had a simple question. I think it was brought up last month about Wawa, maybe, oh, at the corner of McDade and Bullund, and that was going to become something a lot larger there. And there was a meeting a couple of years ago for a little hardwood park neighborhood. What's going on with that? Is that moving forward, or did that get shot down?
Um, we're already in the process of doing this. It is the process of going through, like, zoning laws, is that correct?
Plans were, have been submitted recently to the township for the expansion of that Wawa. They're going to make it. So it's going to tear down the existing Wawa, build it behind it, and put gas pumps at the corner. Right.
Yeah, we had that at the meeting with the residents.
Right, yeah, and it wasn't a huge hit, so I just wanted to know what was going on.
Everybody will be notified that there's a zoning, whenever there's a zoning, so if you're opposing it, you're not going to zoning, it's a different board.
Right.
For reasons that, you know, but.
Okay.
Thanks for the update.
You're welcome.
These things tend to move slowly. Right, yeah, no problem. We just went through one and leave them, they move very slowly. Yeah, okay. No problem, thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else for public forum? Okay, approval of previous meeting minutes, April twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two, May nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, May twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion made, second. Any questions on motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Management report, Frank.
Thank you, Mr. President. We received a request for a block party from Mildred Avenue for July ninth. After discussions with the organizer and some residents, we need approval subject to the following conditions. One is that the block party ends at eight P M. Two, that the D J not be located near twelve thirty-seven or twelve thirty-nine Mildred. And three, that the bounce house must be located near the curb line to give emergency access to vehicles. So I would need an approval based on those.
I'll make a motion to approve that based on those conditions.
Motion made, second. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Also, we received a block party request from the six hundred block of Climber Lane. Everything is in order, and I'm requesting a motion to approve this one. I'll also make a motion to approve.
Motion made, second. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Folsom Fire Company will be holding their annual October fest on Saturday, October eighth, and is requesting Fourth Avenue from Tasker to Sutton Avenue, and Sutton Avenue from Fourth to Orchard be closed to traffic from seven A M. to four P M. on October eighth. We have done this for them in the past. Motion to approve is in order.
We're already talking about October, but my gosh, not even July yet. There was a quick, motion made, second. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
All right, all the commissioners have received an updated copy of our right-to-know policy, which will be posted on our website. A motion is needed to adopt the policy.
I'll second.
Any questions on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Lastly, in furtherance to the telecommunications committee's recommendation, a motion to ratify appointment of Grim, Bean, and Thatcher Law Firm to review the township's self-tower agreements is requested.
I'll make a motion for that. I'll second.
Motion made, second. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
That's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Recycle report. The dollar.
Yes, it's me. That's right. Well, thank you, Mr. Commissioner. I'm old today. I'm not used to this one. The monthly report, trash collected in May was one thousand four hundred and ten point sixty-six tons. Recycle collected in May was one hundred and sixty-two point sixty-seven tons. We collected six TVs and monitors in May through our television monitor recycling program. More information on this program is available on the township website at W W W dot Ridley, yeah, Ridley T W P dot org.
Thanks.
I can hardly reach a child in front of this.
Oh, I'm scared right now.
Under training of this one. Thank God, this is her last.
It's a hard report, thank you.
Yes, it is, a lot.
It was numbers and language. Nothing's seen, sir. Thank you.
Special report, Mr. Neal.
Yes, Mr. President, there was a twenty-twenty-one tax assessment appeal filed by the school district, who were twelve children with a favorite boulevard, that's the Franklin Credit Union Bank property, which resulted in a negotiated settlement, which increases its value from nine hundred ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred twenty dollars, to one million, three hundred forty thousand dollars. This is portfolio number thirty-eight thousand, zero-three, dash, zero-one-one, zero-zero, dash, zero-one. This resulted in an increase of one thousand, eight hundred fifty-four dollars for two thousand and twenty-one. This settlement was approved by the Ridley Board of School Directors on, through a meeting on June sixth, two thousand and twenty-two. We would need a motion for the approval of the settlement authorization for me to sign this stipulation that fixes the assessed value for two thousand and twenty-one at one million, three hundred forty thousand dollars.
Make a motion.
Motion made, second. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Anything for this listener, anybody? Thank you. Engineering report, Mr. Catney.
Thank you, Mr. President. I apologize to bits for consideration. Radio communications service, the two thousand and twenty-two police radio maintenance contract, three thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars and one cent. Eighty services incorporated, the two thousand and twenty-two storm and sanitary sewer contract, fifty-nine thousand, fifty-eight dollars and nine cents. And Abenizio Construction, Pembest water improvements, one hundred sixty-two thousand, three hundred forty-four dollars and ninety cents. And Abenizio Construction, greenhouse drive sanitary sewer project, six thousand, three hundred sixty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents. Mobile dredging and video play incorporated, the Braxton Road sanitary sewer rehabilitation project, seventy-five thousand, nine hundred twenty-four dollars. Pro Max Vent Systems LLC, the now field improvements, Pings number one and two, for one hundred sixty-five thousand, thirty-one dollars. Frania Inc. for the now field improvement site work, four thousand, eight hundred twenty dollars. Traffic planning design for the Kidron and Franklin Avenue traffic signal, two thousand, seven hundred ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents.
Make a motion to approve the certificates of red. I'll second.
Motion made, second. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
We have two escos for consideration. The Chick-fil-A at four oh five McDade Boulevard for four hundred twenty-two thousand, eight hundred twenty-seven dollars and ninety-five cents. And for R J Sun Realty at twenty-six oh three, twenty-six twenty-three East McDade Boulevard for two hundred sixty-five thousand, seven dollars and ten cents.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
We have the two thousand and twenty-two road program status. We awarded a contractor glass gouging to repave some of our streets. They are currently working on the milling portion, and they're up in the C K Morton area. They plan to start paving back, you know, where the start, which is down in Leadham section, as early as Friday.
Okay, there are, just to make sure your guys know, some of those small caps that were placed have come off.
The water valve box.
Yeah, water box. Very.
And then just more information on the Pembest project status, there's an Abenizio Construction, we're finalizing, and we're down to the last two projects to work up on Academy Avenue, and they have a second crew following behind doing cleanup on the job they previously completed.
Okay.
Anything?
Anything for you, Andrew? Thank you. Highway transportation committee report, Mr. Fred.
Yeah, the only thing I have is I'd like to remind the residents that there will be no trash collection on Monday, July fourth, in Observatory and Swift Independence.
Thank you. Recreation committee report, Mr. McMenamin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our summer program, playground program and sport camps opened this week and are off to a great start. There's still time to register for Ring Raiders softball camp. Online registrations can be done through our website, W W, Ridley T W P dot org, under Parks and Recreation. Our summer movie night will be held on Friday, August eighteenth, or August nineteenth, at eight P M. on the grounds of the municipal building. The feature film will be Hall Patrol, the movie. Yes. The township will offer discount tickets to various attractions again this summer. The list of tickets or pricing is listed on the township website. Tickets can be purchased Monday through Friday, nine to four P M. We accept exact cash. There will be no change given after Wednesday, so please, once you have your tickets, have the exact cash for those tickets.
Okay, thank you.
Public safety committee report. For the month of May, our police handled one thousand, one hundred and four calls. Breakdown is as follows. Crumlin eighty-three, Folsom two hundred fifty-seven, Holmes one hundred forty-three, Belmont Park sixty-five, Morton forty-three, Ridley Park one hundred thirty-five, C K ninety-five, Swatmore fifty-three, and Woodman two hundred and third. Interesting events for the month. On May twenty-eighth, Officer Eisenhuth was actively patrolling the home section of Ridley Township in response to a string of commercial burglaries. Shortly after four A M., she spotted four individuals near Woodbridge Tobacco. The actors appeared to be in violation of township curfew ordinance, and some were enclosed that were consistent with the suspects of previous burglaries. Officer Eisenhuth stopped the subjects in further investigation. They were found to be in possession of stolen property and small amount marijuana. Upon being confronted with disounding evidence, the subject confessed to having committed all eight commercial burglaries and took over in the past month. So, great job. On June eleventh, Sergeant McKinney at Platoon Number One was dispatched to the Home Depot for a reported retail theft in progress. Officers took up positions and were able to watch the theft unfold. Once a subject fled in a vehicle as police attempted to intervene. A pursuit ensued, and a suspect vehicle eventually struck a police vehicle from Ridley Park Bar. The actor struggled with police before eventually being taken into custody. The remaining two suspects were apprehended a short time later, and over five thousand dollars in stolen merchandise were recovered. On May twenty-sixth, the Glen Olden Police Department received a call from an older male stalking and taking video of two young girls inside their act. Sergeant Kendall was in the area and spoke with the complainants to gather further information. Upon learning the description of the vehicle and actor, Sergeant Kendall was able to quickly locate the subject. Further investigation showed the actor was indeed taking pictures of young girls and was a registered sex offender. Great job. May twenty-sixth, Officer Judge was working a special detail in response to a rash of commercial burglaries in the area. While on the rear of twenty-six hundred East McDade, Officer Judge took those two subjects on motorcycle activity suspicious. The actors landed, started a pursuit as the police attempted to counter them. Pursuit came to an end, and the actors were taken into custody as a motorcycle was found to be stolen. I was a busy mother, but great job. The cat is fast on all. Nobody wants to get daddy back here. They look intimidating back there. Thanks.
Thank you. Health and code department.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the month of May, we had two hundred thirty-six permits issued, thirty-two contracts registered, forty-four certificates of occupancy issued, sixty-eight credential inspection, and twelve health inspection.
Yeah, I mean, we, don't worry, talk a lot about their food department and the health department, and they're busy every, every single month, and do a great job for us. You know, anytime people have complaints, they, hey, you get a lot of good compliments, and they handle them well, so, great job. Building committee report, Mr. Saunders.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. We received a reverse subdivision application from Ward McManus, one ninety-third of Bellagic Avenue to consolidate two properties into one lot. I'd like to make a motion to approve this application, subject to the alternate township engineers comments.
Second amendment.
Well, second in that motion for Alec MacGowan. That's a my word, he's due on that.
Yeah. What word is that again?
Very second, any questions on the motion? I can't repeat what you said.
Some strange word, I guess, I don't know.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Library Research Center Committee report, Mr. Cummins.
Thank you, Mr. President. The library launched a new website last month redesigned by staff and expert volunteers to offer quick and clear access to the many services available to the area residents. If you want to check your account, download a book or movie, or see what programs or events we have coming up, there are clickable links at the top of the homepage. The new design makes it easier to find information about our museum and zoo passes, notary services, our library of things, and other special collections, and more. There are links to other community organizations such as the school district, the school and senior center, the office of workplace development, the township, and more. There is a digital section for links and information on downloadable books, magazines, films, and TV shows. Check out the new website at W W W dot Ridleylibrary dot org. The library will host a story book walk and then at the township municipal park on Monday, July twenty-fifth, from nine to eleven for families and children three years and older. Families can stroll the path and enjoy a story along the way and collect special items related to the book. Four thousand, nine hundred and ten people visited the library in May and checked out eleven thousand, eight hundred ninety-seven books and other items. Program attendance was one thousand, four hundred and seventeen. The library's staff, trustees, and friends wish everyone in the community a safe and happy summer. Thank you, Mr. President.
Excellent job, as always. Finance committee report, Farset.
Thank you, Mr. President. All commissioners received the list of this month's bills, and I'd like to make a motion for approval, subject to the controllers' review and approval.
Motion made, second. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Hey, older new business, Cummins.
Yes, I'd like to apologize for Delfman, that I screwed up the name, all the residents. Just want to apologize.
I'll pass that along.
Okay, thank you. Do you know where that is? Woodgrove, that's all it comes to.
Oh, it's great. On the upper east side. Do you have anything?
Yes, I want to make sure the residents.
Yes, uh, I wanna make sure the residents of Ridley Township, uh, know that the Leadum Fourth of July Parade is back on again this year. It says, let Leadum ring. Um, they're asking everybody to join on Monday, July fourth. Uh, the rain date is July ninth, which is Saturday, for the Fourth of July Parade, followed by a family fun picnic at the Leadum Community Center, located at the corners of Rodney and Darby Roads. Uh, there's a bike decorating contest prior to the parade, and you have to be there by nine fifteen. Judging will begin at nine forty-five, and the parade will promptly start at ten A M. There will be prizes awarded in different age groups. Um, there will be all kinds of scouts, fire companies, uh, strollers, bikes, floats, uh, some of these, uh, handsome, handsome faces up here will be there. Uh, so please come anyway. Uh, at the picnic, there will be, uh, moon bounces, obstacle courses, fun and games, raffles, uh, shirts for sale, uh, obviously hot dogs and refreshments. Um, if you have any questions or concerns, or if you have like an old, old vehicle that you wanted to drive in the parade, or if you're not from the Leadum section and you wanna come over with a decorated bike with your child or grandchild, please feel free to reach out. You can contact Leadum Civic Association at four eight four, six eight three, five five six zero, or leadumcivicassociation at gmail dot com. And there are, is also a Facebook page, uh, dedicated to the Leadum Estates Civic Association. So that's all I have. Hopefully, everybody comes out that day and enjoys. It's always a fun time.
They always do. They do a really good job on that, for any, any review. Yeah, the resident?
Thank you. I just wanted to, uh, thank the rec board, the commissioners, and the township. Um, as you can see, around the township, we're doing a lot of work on, on the fields. And, uh, it's, it's much needed, and it's gonna look great, and the children are gonna love it. And also, even the playgrounds in the area that we're doing, keep an eye on and, uh, upgrading the, uh, equipment and stuff, just to help build the wall. Township, the new pickleball court, I know we're still working on that a little bit. It's being used now. But I just want to thank everybody that has been improving the township. Thank you.
Thank you. Farset?
I just have one thing I wanted to share that a resident of Swatmore would have shared. If you have a library card, Delvercamy provides access to Hoopla. I can find that. Where you can borrow almost any kind of digital media that you can launch on Roku or other streaming devices. That's pretty cool. So if you have a library card, look into a Hoopla, H O O P L I. That's it. Happy State, happy Fourth of July.
Happy Hoopla, everybody. Thank you. Thank you. Any questions, George?
We move again.
Thank you.